She is at my daughter's dance tonight, something that was scheduled way before this. So one has to go and one has to stay. So I'm going to be here. I'm going to play the role of clerk and counsel. So I'm gonna do the roll call for the special meeting for twelve eighteen twenty twenty. I'll call the roll. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I am here.
Counselor Bartley.
Here.
Counselor Grainey. I see him. He's muted. Yep. Counselor Hernandez.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Present.
Counselor Bern Martinez.
Here.
Counselor Lisi. We're saying, oh, so that's who we're visiting. Okay. So Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Tomlin?
Here.
Counselor Bacon? Alright, so yeah, yeah, here. Gotcha. So with that, I know we're coming off of finance and as was mentioned, things have changed even today from the state. So we have all our parties here to do it. So the first item on the agenda for the special meeting was introduced by Counselor McGivern. It was the order that to hereby be appropriated five million six hundred sixty-four thousand one forty-three from personal services, other expenses. That was two point four two million. And then tuition assessment, one point three eight. Two sped tuition assessment to two hundred and twenty, looks like two hundred and eighty-two dollars, sorry. And then school choice assessment, one one nine seven four one for the total of, or actually that is two, eight, two hundred and eighty-two thousand. So total amount was five million six six four. It looks like a typo. So with that, motion would be to take this up for discussion from Counselor McGivern and then get the updates as to everything else. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, two things. Uh, this order was slightly different than the order we had in Finance Committee. Uh, just a, just a before, prior to this meeting itself. And, and that was because of a, a change since our full city council meeting, our last full city council meeting on Tuesday. Uh, we also found out, you know, in the Finance Committee meeting and for everybody that was with us, from the mayor, from the auditor, from our tax collector, from the schools, that both changes in the recap sheet, recapitulation sheet, which is the cherry sheet that the state, you know, that says, that the state uses to, uh, to verify all revenues and all monies that are coming into the municipality have made a big difference in what we were anticipating tonight, both on what is the reduction within the schools and the fact that we no longer need to transfer money out of stabilization to correct any deficit at this point in time, in that we learned that DLS is not asking us at this point in time to correct the deficit within the sewers. So it's maybe short-term good news and, and certainly good news in terms of what we have to do tonight and finish in, to, uh, to finish the, uh, the final tax rate and also to balance the budget before we do that. So, Mr. President and everybody, what we have before us is an item that is, we, we are to vote on this eve, we can vote on this evening, but we need to take into consideration these clerical changes in terms of the numbers that have to be reduced within the school department budget itself. Um, many people refer to this as an appropriation transfer. It's not an appropriation transfer, rather it's a reduction according to the, the change in revenue estimates. And that's what we get, you know, according to the recap sheet itself. So I'm suggesting, and I think we should check with legal, and, and I defer to you, Mr. President, that, that we take the, uh, just take the substitute order that we were giving earlier this evening, the numbers that were given by, um, by the school department to us, the numbers that the mayor has, the numbers that the auditor has, and we take a vote to reduce the budget. Uh, with or without this vote, I believe we can still go on. And the only other thing we have to go on this evening, Mr. President, I believe, is if we are going to use tax classification to adjust the tax rate. But once we, once the budget is balanced, which I think it is, that's the next step. But we do have to take this vote before the end of the year at the schools.
Right. So just so everyone here and at home knows, we did a finance meeting discussing, uh, financial transfers that were late filed at the last city council meeting. So it was Tuesday, the fifteenth, of which then we set up for the special meeting, some adjustments that we found out just before deadlines for filing and attached that to the special meeting, knowing that the orders, uh, were going to be discussed in finance and in essence, talking about the adjustments, which was a two hundred thousand dollar adjustment at that time. We have since learned today, uh, that there was another adjustment with regards to sewer as well as the schools. So therefore, I do have a, a late file communication from Tanya, uh, which is that what we were talking about towards the end there, which was, um, one point nine, one million nine hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred, uh, if I read that right, yeah, seven hundred dollars in a two million dollars. So one was from personal services and one was from public schools, other expenses, to give that grand total of three million nine hundred seventy-three, uh, seven hundred, which then would be doing to reduce the school side, which was addressed by Anthony Soto towards the end of the finance meeting. So that is a late file that did come in just before the finance meeting. Anyone have any questions on that so far? I know we did a quick finance meeting. This all has come rather quickly, but.
Mr. President, just so we're on the same page, the, I believe the total reduction is the three point nine million?
Yep, three nine seven three seven hundred.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'll go to, not seen any hands or. Go to the chat. Uh, Counselor Grainey, did you have a question?
No.
Alright, your blue hands up, which is shocking me because you're calling in.
I don't know. I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble with this phone today, but.
How much power is finally with us?
Alright, not, not a problem. I just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. So with that, I don't see anyone's hands.
Make a motion that we adopt the order to reduce the school department budget by the three point nine million.
Well, hold on. First, we gotta take it up as a late file because it wasn't on the special agenda.
We can delete file to replace item number one.
Alright, so motion is to take up late file and I'll read it just so, because it wasn't posted on the special agenda. It is, uh, order from Counselor McGivern, order that they're hereby be, uh, raised and appropriated for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, three million nine hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred dollars as follows from public school slash personal services, one million nine hundred seventy-three dollar, uh, seventy-three thousand seven hundred dollars. And then public school slash other expenses, two million for that total that we addressed, three million nine hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Motion is to, uh, take this out of order. All those in favor?
Alright.
Bye.
Host. Counselor McGivern, back to you.
Thank you. I'm the, uh, the accepted late filed order, the replacement order. I make a motion that we receive and adopt it. I, Mr. President, for, uh, uh, I, I believe we, we do a first and second reading, but I'm not positive about that.
Well, we'll, we'll have to. We'll have to do a first and second reading for, for any transfer. So this would be motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. So seeing how it's coming up for the first time, you'd still need the two-thirds vote it, because it didn't have a first reading from the prior meeting. So with that, Counselor McGivern? Anything else or no?
I think, I think everybody was present at the Finance Committee meeting. If there's any questions. Uh, we were, it was very, uh, informative meeting. Uh, Dr. Vasquez Matos was with us. He, he gave us a lot of information to think about. Anthony Soto was with us. As always, Anthony was on top of his explanations of what we're dealing with. And, uh, Dr. Vasquez Matos, Anthony Soto, you know, when he came on with us, with the, uh, with your predecessor, you know, Anthony shared, or we learned a lot more things about school, the, school department budget and funding than we've known in many years. And we appreciate Mr. Soto and we, uh, certainly look forward to working with them, you know, throughout the, uh, your tenure and throughout the, uh, the years to come. Um, we, besides learning of the changes from the mayor and from our auditor and from Kenny Jakowski, who was our tax collector, but who works with the, uh, the emergency CARES Act people within the city also. Um, we, we feel comfortable that this is the, the correct vote we need to take this evening. Uh, it is a, a, a step in balancing the budget, the school department, although we call it the school department budget is part of the overall budget and we do have to, uh, balance everything to make sense out of it. We are, we are one city, as we all often say.
Amen.
And, uh, so with that, I would, I would suggest if there's no questions, that we would just pass the first reading and adopt it in the second reading.
Ca- Counselor Bartley, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I think Counselor Leahy is before me, but I'll, I'll.
Um, this thing keeps only, it only shows you, okay, go, go ahead. I'm trying to fix it, but Counselor Bartley.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, okay. Well, I want to thank, uh, thank Dr. B. Good to meet you. Um, I want to thank Mr. Soto. Um, thank our auditor and our, of course, our assessor. Um, I, I don't think, I'm just, just on process. Uh, when we are transferring on the day of a vote, um, three point nine seven million dollars. Three, three days before, uh, on, on Monday, we, we looked like we had a, uh, we were, uh, exceeded, uh, the, uh, the levy limit by about four million dollars. Now, now we have unused levy limit of about six hundred thousand dollars. This all happened within the span of five days, Mr. President? I, I don't know about you or anybody else here. Um, and I, I doubt anybody else will speak up on this.
I'd be happy to speak up.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just flabbergasted by the process. I, I hope, uh, well, after last year, when we had four budgets sent to us on, on the day we were going to vote, I, I guess I shouldn't be flabbergasted. We had four, four different budgets. Um, when we were, uh, back at City Hall in the old days, uh, four different budgets were, were sent to us. And, um, and now we have a, a turnaround of, of this magnitude in the last few days. Um, it, it's, it's really, it's really a bit of a whirlwind how this government is being run. And, and we're, we're, we're almost, I almost feel like we're pawns as part of it. And, um, so it doesn't, it doesn't feel that great. Uh, we're, we're going to have to get through this. I, I, I hope everyone had a chance to look at, I mean, we just had a finance committee meeting that, uh, I, I think we talked about finance for, for about eight minutes. And, and it was a good meeting. I'm not knocking the meeting, but the, the, the finance part was, um, uh, limited in scope. And I, I didn't want to ask any more questions of what my time allotted. I, I hope everyone's had a chance to at least look at the, uh, at the options that we have. I, 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 I do want to point out that I believe our current tax rate, and Mr. President, you'll remind us, but it, I believe it's nineteen oh eight for residential and thirty-nine seventy-three for commercial. I might be off a little bit, but.
No, I just had that written down. Um, I do believe you're right off the fine in my notes, but.
It is.
That's accurate.
Okay. So, uh, so, uh, 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 under this, so if we, if we kept it at nineteen oh eight, uh, that would mean the commercial would go to forty-one twenty-two. And, and we already know, we, we already know that the residential owner is, had a five percent hit last year and another five percent this year. Uh, and in terms of, uh, valuations. Now, I, I, I think that's a, that's a great sign and, and, you know, a lot of people should take vows on that and, and that's, that's great. But there's no debate that there's going to be a, a financial hit to, to the, uh, to, to the homeowners that are, they're, they're going to, uh, stick through Holyoke thick and thin, um, like everyone here in this meeting. Um, without, without exception, as far as I, as far as I know. And, uh, but it's, uh, it, it, to me, this is a, um, huh, this, this is, I, I don't know if this is the way Holyoke's always done it. Uh, I, I, I just know that this is the way it's been. It, it's scrambled, scrambled eggs for, uh, for multiple years in a row. And it's, it's very frustrating, uh, Mr. President. So, uh, as far as the transfer goes, the, um, and, and I've got more sheets of paper dumped on me in the last three hours than, than I normally get in, in terms of a whole city council meeting. Uh, but it looks like we're, it looks like we're, the school department's taken one point nine seven out of personnel, the, another two million out of transportation. It looks like the, uh, school choice and the charter school dipped to maybe seventy-one thousand. The charter school about one point seven million. Looks like sped went up two hundred and eighty-two dollars. And, and then, so it looks like the only transfer we have right now though is a three point nine million. But the school department budget is reduced by five point eight two million dollars. That's the, that's the way I read this. And this is all done in span of a, a week. Now, now why this hasn't done, in, in all the months leading up to this, and why don't we have our arms around this budget? Is, is, is a mystery to, to me. Uh, but I, but I'm, I'm sure there's some, I'm sure there's a reasonable explanation for it. But we're going to have to make a, a pretty hard vote with, with the tax rate if we want to take a break for, to the residential property owners. I, I, I've got to assume the residential rate's going to go up. If we want to keep the, the, the almighty forty-dollar month line, then the residential rate has to go up to nineteen fifty-one. Yeah, um, and so hopefully the public is, is listening to this. So it'll go from nineteen oh eight to nineteen fifty-one. And, and that's top of, and that's on, that's going to just add a little more misery to your, uh, increased valuations. So, uh, with that in mind, I'll, I'll, um, I'll hang back. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Uh, yes, thank you. Yes, um, we're, we're just coming off the finance meeting. Um, it was good. I got a chance to, uh, talk to and, and, uh, introduce myself, um, to our new receiver, um, Dr. Alberto Vasquez. Um, and, and the first thing I said to him is, uh, he gave him a little editorial saying that I, I, I wish instead of having a virtual day, um, when we had this nor'easter, that, um, our public schools, um, should have done, in my opinion, what other, uh, communities, uh, have done and let the kids have a snow day, a, a typical old-fashioned snow day. And maybe throw out a contest, uh, who could build the best snowman? And that sort of thing. And, uh, and, and I would have, uh, not that I, I'm in favor of giving trophies to everyone, although my cousin Meg Den would probably, uh, hate to hear that. Uh, but I think that every person who did go outside and have an enjoyable day and built a snowman would have got some sort of prize. So that was my little two cents. Um, the second thing is what we were discussing, uh, particularly what I had brought up was, um, uh, school choice and the amount of money that, um, the city of Hoyoke is spending for school choice. And I'm not talking about children that have to go outside of the school, um, for, you know, specific reasons for a different school, um, you know, such as, you know, Down syndrome or autism. I'm not talking about that at all. What I'm talking about is children who are opting out of our public school system to go to other schools for one reason or another. That's a, that's a specific, um, amount of money that we're spending. Although, uh, it was reported by Anthony Soto, who I, I'm, um, totally in favor of Anthony and he knows that. I've been talking to him for years. Uh, I think he's doing a fantastic job, but he did let us know that the school choice, um, uh, they, what they budgeted was two point nine, two point eight million and it's going to be about two point seven million. So that's a savings of around seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, that's a, that's, that's something we can't really control, but I did ask the good doctor, um, if he's, uh, having any conversation to maybe, uh, change that formula. And he said that he is. Uh, also charter school, um, charter, charter school, they budgeted for twelve point nine. It looks like it's going to be about eleven point one. So it's a savings of, uh, one point seven million dollars. Um, that's another avenue where I wish that we didn't have to, um, pay, um, what we do. Uh, another thing too is, you know, we really don't know what, um, and I, and I would ask, I see Dr. Vasquez is on here. I would love for him to maybe email over his budget, uh, including salaries, especially for the higher, uh, you know, the high, so much the teachers, but maybe all the people down at Suffolk Street, exactly what they're making. Um, I think Joe said it the other night very eloquently, this is taxation without representation. Um, uh, I wish that we had a little bit more control of the taxpayer's money when it comes to the schools, because we don't. I also, uh, think that, uh, I also think that the insurance, health insurance, I think that we should be looking more into strategically partnering with the state with the GIC plan. Where, you know, if you open the pool, if you make the pool bigger, it should be, uh, less expensive. Um, the city of Hoyoke is paying a lot of money for the health insurance and also the employees are paying a lot of the money for the health insurance. So if we can lower both the city side and also the employee side, um, you know, everybody would be happy. And I suppose the last thing, um, I want to talk about is the transportation. Um, right now, it was reported Monday that we're paying, um, I, I believe it's fifty percent. I guess the contract, uh, uh, says that we, you know, we're not using the buses. We still have to pay fifty percent, um, of what we're normally paying. So that's just still a substantial, uh, burden on the city of Hoyoke. Certainly because we're not using the buses. And, uh, secondly, um, uh, you know, that's it for now. I'll let somebody else talk. Thank you.
Ca- Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a, a quick follow-up. Um, and, and all good questions and it was a good finance committee meeting. And then the, one of the reasons that we're behind the eight ball here with, uh, with days to go, to be able to give our departments time to get the assessments corrected and the tax bills out and finalize the rates so that all the property owners in this city know exactly what their next quarter bill is and their final quarter bill will be, is, is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did not finalize their budget till last Friday night. And our, our departments and the mayor told us that we were giving some err, erroneous information in terms of what budget the governor finally signed and that it slightly was different than the recap sheet that we worked with for, for the last week. Last week isn't much either. I realize that to make these important decisions. Um, you, some people are going to blame it on COVID, but this happens to us almost, almost every year. We, we are at, at the, the mercy of the state doing their budget, which if you look at their laws, state statute, their budget is supposed to be done in May. And, and so that a, a government, a mayor or, or town manager can present the budget to the legislative body in June. And I've never seen that. I've never seen a state budget completed before July one. And then quite frankly, you know, and, and if you want to point fingers, you know, point it towards the state because we, we, this, this year's obviously different. There's still a big question out there about what, if any, federal aid is coming in terms of the pandemic to local and state governments. That, that question has not been resolved. Uh, currently, the, the language that is killing us is that we cannot use the CARES Act or the state aid that we have to replace revenue that we anticipated. And, and that's not fair because a lot of revenue we didn't get, sewer bills, things like sewer, uh, collections, things like that, are directly related to COVID. And I, I think they're, they're trying to, trying to reinvent the language for how, you know, how the federal government is going to aid, uh, local government and state governments. But that's, that's not tonight. Tonight is, we need to finalize the budget. We do this every year. It, it shouldn't be at the last minute, but it's in front of us. It is what it is. And this vote right now is a reduction. I know we keep calling it a transfer, but it's a reduction, reducing this, the school department budget by three million nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. And, and I thank, you know, the, uh, the good doctor and, and, and Mr. Soto for working with this and this. And even that under the eleventh hour themselves, trying to figure it out and, and all while trying to run, run the schools in the middle of pandemic themselves. And certainly we, we recognize the difficulties that that, that brings on. So my, my suggestion is in, to balance the budget, the great news is we don't have to transfer any money from stabilization. We don't have to do anything. We will have discussions down the road again with DLS and with whoever we need to about the deficits within the budget this year or last year, at the end of last year. But right now, we got to focus on balancing the budget and then moving next to the classification issue itself. So I, I suggest that we adopt this reduction of the school department budget and thank the doctor and Anthony for being with us tonight.
Anyone else from the council?
I think Doctor, uh.
I, I, I see his hand up. I just want to make sure if there are other council members first. Seeing none, motion would be to suspend the rules to allow the school department to answer questions. I know the doctor has raised his hand. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Doctor?
Thank you, um, city council members for, um, inviting me to this meeting. Um, first of all, I, I was watching the, uh, the last meeting and I know many was questioning, why have, I, why haven't I reached out? So I just want to clarify that, you know, coming into a new, um, position as a superintendent, my first charge was getting a plan for reopening schools in the middle of pandemic. So it's not that I wanted to dismiss anyone, any of you of having a dialogue, but I know that, that moving forward, I will be connecting. If not, I know emails has gone out and I know communication has gone out on all the stuff that I've done around communicating with our stakeholders, our city. Um, and, and our community and making sure that they understand what we are dealing with and how we can actually best provide a high-quality educational program for our students. And so please know that, that I am, I am here for you and for all of our students and families as we continue navigating these challenging times on the pandemic. So thank you so much for having me. As it relates to the budget, um, I want to, I, I am grateful to the mayor, um, um, Alex, um, Morse and his team, as well as my team, um, Anthony Soto, on making sure that we actually, um, do this in a spirit of collegiate, collegiateary and professionalism around how can we actually meet the needs of, of our city. And so the transportation budget was reduced based on, on the participation rate um, because of the pandemic. However, it's important for the city council to know that after the holiday season, we will be moving forward with, um, a hybrid approach, which means that we will be introducing the pre-K to second grade um, on incoming to in-person learning and out, at the same time allowing for parental a choice so that parents can participate whether in-person or remote. And then increasing the number of students who can participate in in-person learning. Currently, we have about six to eight, six to seven hundred students who are participating in personal learning. That is our special needs students, our students who are participating in our vocational program, as well as others who are participating in transportation program. Additionally, it's important for us to understand that there was a question that was brought up around payroll. Um, it's important to know that as Holyoke, and this is just in the six months that I've been on board and I have twenty-six years under my belt in different districts as a district leader. Holyoke is below the, the competition of acquiring and re, and, and recruiting the most high professional individuals for teaching and learning, which to me as a superintendent, your superintendent, forget about receivership. I am your superintendent. Forget about receivership. I am your superintendent that loves this, this city. I fell in love with this city. But the fact that I have to pay less for teachers and parents and principals to this, to the most, um, nearest districts or counties for me is an issue. And so I am working with my team around doing a, a true salary study to making sure that we can pay those who we recruit and can retain and can live in the city of Holyoke so that they can invest, buy a home, go to dinner, shop in Holyoke so that they can be part of the ecosystem of the city. Right now, we do not have that infrastructure. It is so fluid that people can pick and choose. So that means a, a teacher that comes in, we can train, understanding the urban context and, and the challenges of our urban context. And in one year or two years, can go to a suburban district nearby, get paid more and then invest. That is our reality. So it is, it is truly a dilemma and a problem of practice that we as a district need to address. And so I need to, I need this, the city council to understand the complexity of how we kind of navigate the budget and the parameters of the budget to make sure we can hire, appropriately compensate so that they can stay and invest and stay in our school. appropriately compensate, so that they can stay and invest and stay in our school system on behalf of our students. And please note that we did survey our students last month. Majority of our students, eighty percent of our students say they need teachers and principals that look and can relate to them in order for them to connect. And that is our work around what we call anti-racism work for our school district. So I, I need to make sure that our city council understands the work that we are trying to do because we are a district where eighty percent of our students are identified as Latino Hispanic students that are requesting our help to connect, and making sure we have the best qualified educators in front of them that can connect with them and connect with their history, their challenges, and their obstacles. So I wanna stop there, and I'm gonna allow for any questions, um, that you may have for me.
Councillor Lisi?
Uh, thank you. I, I don't have a direct question for, uh, Dr. Vasquez. I do want to note that, um, the problems that you just discussed related, um, to the, um, difficulties that the district is having in terms of recruiting and retaining, uh, talent. Um, and additionally, um, talent that's going to be representative of the students there, um, is the exact same conversation that we're presently having in the ordinance committee about the employees in City Hall. Um, not only does, you know, our inability to attract and retain, um, talented, uh, staff, uh, impact, um, the work that we got, the, the, the work that we get to do in our, um, community and the services that we're providing, um, but it is also, I mean, it just, it, we, we're, like you said, we, we, we're becoming an exporting, uh, district. We, we train people, and then they take the skills and talents that we give them and bring them into other communities. Uh, and then that leaves us with a further deficit, both of, um, funds and also the talent and the time. I mean, the, the deficits are, uh, unreal. So, so I, um, I absolutely understand and empathize with you in terms of the work that you have to do on, on the school side. It's something that we are um, working very hard, um, to do, um, on the city side. And I think that, um, we, we really, we, we need to do more. And the way that we do more for and with our community is, on one hand, it's going to be engaging more people to, uh, work alongside of city government, whether it's the school district or, uh, you know, the public schools or, or the, the city government itself. Um, and, um, you know, we, we just need to get, uh, more traction on the individual projects that we take on. Um, otherwise, it's like we're in a downward spiral, and, and I think that, uh, the success of the city really, um, depends, uh, you know, in, in a really, um, I guess, serious way on, on being able to staff City Hall, city government, the public schools, um, with, with folks who are going to, um, stick around and drive the programming that we wanna see. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson Burgos.
Dr. Alberto Vasquez Matos. Um, my name is, uh, Councillor Juan Anderson Burgos. I'm the Ward Six Councillor. First of all, I wanna thank you so much. Um, I listened to you in finance, and, and I'm listening to you now. And I can't agree anymore with everything you have said. And I wanna piggyback off Councillor Lisi, what she was saying, how we have discussed that we need to start paying our people or our staff, um, what they deserve, because they will seek other employment. And I'm sorry, but, no, actually, no, I'm not sorry. Our people in this community, our children in this community, in the people that work in this, with this, with this, um, students, the teachers, the staff, all of these people deserve to be paid better than what they're currently being paid. You can't expect, if you don't invest in something as important as education, you can't expect miracles. And we can't keep saying, oh, we're in receivership, we're in receivership. Well, the only way to possibly get out of receivership is to stand up, pay the bill, and put our best foot forward. That means forward-thinking, paying what these people deserve, paying the talent so that we can succeed. Cause if not, we're gonna find ourselves here again, year after year after year. And I'm going to tell you, now that I have some way of communicating to the state, I am going to start knocking on doors over there as well. Because we are Holyoke. We deserve better. We are better. And the only way we're gonna do this is with every single person, every single person in this little squares, in these little squares, us working together, fighting for what we deserve, for what our children deserve, for what our teachers deserve, for what all we deserve. The only way we're gonna do this is we all collaboratively work together to achieve what's best interest for the schools, for the students, and the future of this city. Thank you, guys.
Councillor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think we all share in the aspirational goals. Um, I think there's no one that would disagree with the concepts and the philosophies that we're talking about. I do just encourage us to remember that while we're looking to pay fair wages in all of the various positions within our purview, we have a constituency that is suffering greatly in this COVID situation relative to their jobs, their incomes, and their ability to sustain their families and their day-to-day bills as we're sitting here looking at this budget. And so I think we have the challenge of meeting the aspirational goals, but we also have the challenge of how we allocate the money within our budgets. Because we are at the point now, as we're sitting here tonight, looking at these tax rates, where there is absolutely no one that is going to be happy that is in our constituency with what we're going to need to do tonight. Because on the one hand, if we keep the residential rate the same, our residents, many on fixed incomes, are going to be sustaining yet again another tax increase. And if we theoretically keep the residential rate the same, we will be making a substantial increase to our business community who's also been suffering a lot. So it's really, really hard to find the win-win here tonight. But what keeps coming back to us again and again is that the people that are supporting this budget are having a harder and harder time paying the bills to support our budget. So we do have a very complex situation. But we have to keep in mind who's actually paying for our budgets. And we have to try to be the best stewards of this money that we can be. And I appreciate, um, you coming in, Doctor, and I appreciate your passion and your goals, and I just, um, hope we can find a win-win in this, um, very challenging, difficult situation that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure, President...
President?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Doctor. Councillor Grady?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, what, uh, Councillor Bacon has said is, is very accurate. There are many, many seniors that are homeowners in the community in Hoyoke that have been here for many, many years. They are bleeding right now, uh, with the COVID virus. They're locked into their homes. They're, they can't go different places. They can't socialize. They're having a very difficult time. Tax increases are killing them. Many are gonna have to be selling their homes. And I think what we need to do is we need to be very careful about, certainly about that population who has supported this community for hundreds of years. And we need to, we need to look out for them and take care of them as well. Because another tax increase on top of what we have for many seniors who are in their homes is gonna be devastating, and we have to be very careful. And I appreciate the passion of the new superintendent of schools and other councillors who have spoken, uh, in, in regards to this issue. But there are many people out there who are on a fixed income, who are on social security, who are on Medicare, who cannot afford to continue, and they have no place to go. And we need to be careful, and we need to take care and look out for them the way they have looked out for us for many, many years. Thank you.
Doctor Vasquez? You're, you're on mute.
So I just, I just wanna respond to what, which I totally understand and affirm those, those comments. Um, but at, at the same time, I, I do have a large homeless population in my school community who are in shelters, currently who are in shelters, and very soon when, when the, the moratorium on the, on the evictions will expire, I am preparing for a huge amount of my student population who are probably going to be displaced. And with the help of the state and the city, the mayor and his team, we have designated some sites in, in our school district to open emergency shelters. It doesn't, I think it's important for the community to understand, who is watching, that in the middle of a pandemic, historically, whether it's the Black Plague, whether it was polio, that school systems have been the beacon of hope to get individuals to surpass the obstacles that arises from these situations. And so the reason I'm saying this is because as a city, not just the school district, we come together to create those social services, those investments, to be able to get those individuals that have created, who have, um, not created, but have, um, encountered these challenges and get them to a place where they can actually begin to create income, jobs, food, stabilization, so that they can become productive citizens. And so I wanna partner with the city, the, 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 the state in making sure we have those protocols and those opportunities in place for our students and our families. I have about a hundred-plus students, and Anthony can probably quote me on that number, who are right now homeless. And we have provided them laptops, hotspots, in order for them to get that education opportunity. But I know, because I've spoken to community partners, that when this moratorium on the rent happens, we're gonna have to probably provide even more. So with that said, it's important for our community to understand, for our community to, to, to flourish, we need to come together to create these opportunities and eradicate those obstacles so that they can flourish because the pandemic is not something that they chose. It's, it's a reality that just happened upon us. And so while I agree with, um, Councilwoman Linda and, and everyone else, I think it's important to also understand the, the other variables that happen with our families that cause them to actually end up in situations that are unfortunate, and how do we actually get them from an unfortunate situation to a stable situation? And so very soon, in the next two or three weeks, we're gonna have to come together to kinda strategize around that and making sure we create those opportunities. Because at the end of the day, it's about the dignity of the person. And cannot, we cannot translate that into dollars and cents. And that is, again, that's just me, Alberto, talking. It's not, you know, political stance. It's just me, Alberto, talking as your superintendent, as your superintendent, talking about what I want to, um, on behalf of my, um, of my kids and my families. That's, that's all I want. That's, that's all I want. So I'll stop there.
No, thank you very much. Councillor Bacon, you started your hand up. Did you have another question? Okay, Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, thank you, everybody. It's been, uh, I know some of the, uh, conversations tonight's been a little extracurricular as far as the purpose of tonight and our final votes are budgetary and finance. But the, you know, Doctor, your, your, your passion, your compassion for our students, I said earlier, we do share. And you know I was one of the, probably the vocal city councillor earlier this week. And, uh, it's just a method to my madness is, we got you in front of us. I look forward to working with you in the future, cause there's a lot, a lot to talk about. Um, and I, I, just from a budget point of view, and I think Councillor Bacon, you know, points out this, what we have, what we're dealing with, the big picture, the, the homeless children you're dealing with right now, and, and I've said this many times, you know, the city of Hoyoke didn't create poverty. We service poverty. On Oak, Oak and Beach Street, there's, there's a shelter run by CHD, a family shelter. Fifty-five families with two, two-hundred-and-something kids on an average. Of those families, less than one-third come from Hoyoke. They come as far away as from Boston, and that's the way the, the state system works. You know it, I know it. It makes, it demands, it puts a bigger demand on our teachers, on our whole educational system. It puts a bigger demand on our whole system as a whole. And that's what we deal with. And Anthony, you pointed out, you know, with Chapter Seventy monies, our, our percentage of education is around thirteen percent. The state is funding eighty-seven percent. I don't have a problem with that. That's not, that's not a handout. It's not a gift. We're servicing poverty for everybody that runs home to a bedroom community because we live here and because we believe we can do a good job. And we can believe, I hope, we all believe, education is part of the way of breaking the poverty cycle and then finding jobs, and then getting everybody to work and getting everybody out of poverty, or at least the option, an opportunity to get out of poverty. And that, that's, to me, that's what it's about. Now, I'm off on a tangent, Mr. President, cause we gotta balance this budget.
Yes, we do. So with that, the item before us is the order for the three million nine seventy-three, seven hundred. I see no other, uh, Councillor Sullivan, your hand came up.
Hit the wrong button again.
All right, so motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the, uh, reduction, as we call it. And I'll go in order. Councillor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councillor Bartley?
Yes.
Councillor Graney?
Yes.
Councillor Hernandez?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor LaBourne Martinez?
Yes.
Councillor Lisi?
Yes.
Councillor McGee? Yes. Councillor McGivern?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councillor Tallman?
Yes.
Councillor Bacon?
Yes.
That's thirteen affirmative unanimous vote. With that, you've passed, uh, that late file. Now, with the special meeting, we're items one, two, four, and five, if I have that correct. One, two, four, and five, motion would be to send them back to the auditor.
Councillor McGivern? Send them back to the auditor?
Could you read them, Tom?
Yeah, I, I am. I just wanted to see if we're gonna package them, if that's what you wanted to do first.
Sounds good.
Is that correct, Councillor McGivern? That's what you're looking for?
Um, are, are you, are you looking at like their committee reports?
Well, just to remind everyone, when we started, I said we have the committee reports that came out, which was the, you know, five million four-hundred-and-something. But then the mayor, knowing just before we scheduled this meeting, was able to, uh, talk with the school department, and they were gonna change the one-point-eight million to two million for busing. So he filed two other orders to adjust for that, that change, and then we're gonna look... Instead of taking eight hundred and eighty-three thousand from stabilization to six hundred and fourteen. Those are now, are gone because of what we talked about. It's normally either you pass them or you deny them. And now the process is that you'd like to send them back to the auditor for.
That would be the finance committee's recommendation, you know, along with uh, the, the item number two on this uh, this agenda also.
Yep. So it would be item one, two, four, and five to suspend the rules and take up as a package.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So item one was um, taking five million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Um. That one's gonna go back. The stabilization request is item number two, which was six hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Eighty-five cents. Item four was a transfer of the. Which was in finance, was the five million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, one forty-three. And then from finance was number five, which was general uh, stabilization of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven fifty-eight. Eighty-five cents. So those are the ones that are going back to the auditor. Counselor Murphy, your hand is up.
Yes, I, I just uh, I, I would. Like to see if we can't consider at least one of the stabilization transfers for, for two, for one major reason. Uh, number one, even at eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, we would still end up with four hundred thousand dollars of interest in the stabilization fund. And the only reason I look to do this is, and it's been said before, I mean. I've looked at, even if we kept the tax rate at nineteen oh eight, that's, that's still almost a six percent increase on homeowners in terms of what they're gonna pay. In a very tough time, and it would be uh. Something along the lines of a seven, eight percent increase uh, for uh, best business, commercial properties. Uh, in a time when obviously many of them are struggling. Uh, and to me, the potential, this is. You know, we've got a very substantial uh, stabilization fund. Uh, and if we can. Transfer that, those funds and, and reduce our tax levies to try to get. Uh, some kind of compensation for both our residential and our commercial uh, uh, properties. Uh, I think that would be an excellent use of the stabilization fund in terms of, we're in, we're in a crisis situation. Uh, we would still be, we still have reserve funds if we need them. Uh, but we could. Definitely potentially, and again, I don't have what the figure would be with, if we were able to do this. But an eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar deduction from our tax levy certainly should. I would say at least reduce by half the potential increase in, in our, in our taxes on our residence and commercial businesses. And that's. That's the reason I would like to do this. Ordinarily, I would not, but I, in this particular case, I, I, I would like us to take those up separately. And to at least consider them and see what impact they would have if in fact we did the eight hundred and eighty-three. What would the impact be in terms of our uh, potential residential tax rate and our business tax rate? Uh, in order to uh, make the appropriation that we need.
Well, appropriate motion would be, motion would be to suspend rules, allow uh, uh, the Tony, Tony Delude to speak. Uh, on your re, re-numbers, if that were to happen. So all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Tony, how are you?
I'm doing alright.
Uh, as, as Counselor Murphy just said, he's looking to, whether it's the eight eighty-three or the six hundred number. If we were to approve one of those tonight from. Uh, stabilization to help offset the tax rate, would you have those numbers available or would you not? Or would you need some time?
I ran some, I ran some numbers. Um, it would probably change about. You know, depending on what you guys would vote on, or what the council would vote on the body. It would depend, if you use the same percentage as the year before, it's probably gonna change it about fifty, fifty cents on the um. You know, close to forty to fifty cents on the um, thousand for uh, for uh, residential side. So. Um, commercial side, um, that's probably gonna be about a dollar. So, um, between the two of them, it would. Go down. It's not gonna go down substantially, but you know, that's up to you guys as a vote and what you wanna do with that. I did run some numbers for uh, Terry before, you know, just as a, a what-if scenario, like you have in front of you. Um, I would have to, you know, make sure that that vote was put in. And then if you guys were to vote on that as a whole, then those numbers would have to be a um, a transfer. Financial transfer, put that in and then run some numbers again for you. But, you know, as a what-if scenario, it's gonna save more on the residential side than the commercial side, so.
Counselor.
Mr. President, a point of order.
Counselor Mayor, yep.
On a point of order, I, I, I understand exactly what Counselor Murphy is saying, and it's worthy of discussion and. It should be with the mayor, but what's before us is not the intent of the mayor to do this. And I don't believe that we can, under the circumstances, take these stabilization transfers and treat them as. As a redo, a reduction of the tax uh, levy itself, without the mayor putting them in front of us for the purposes. The reason he put us in front of us to reduce the levy was to, is because of the deficit situation, which we know was corrected before tonight. And so I think it's unfair to, to assume we could do that, and I think it's unethical to do it without the mayor's permission.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to comment that. If theoretically we were to use any resources to do this, we now have over six hundred thousand dollars that is sitting in free cash. And I don't think it would be proper, as things are before us right now. To use the stabilization money since we currently have a balanced budget. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Uh, thank you. I actually support Counselor Murphy's motion. Um, I think that we should explore ways of using our stabilization fund to offset. Uh, the tax rate for our residents and our businesses. Um, I actually think however that um. You know, in order not to get the sort of um, strike against the city, that we do need some direction and how to um, apply. The stabilization dollars. And so perhaps we could um, apply it to. You know, a similar line item such as like the sewer deficit um, for this year and, and use that number. Um, again, we, we don't wanna be using uh, stabilization funds for um, you know. Regular operational expenses. Um. So it'd be, I think, I think we need to understand where and how much, um, you know. We could sort of direct those funds to offset the overall um. Balance that we would have to uh, cover with our tax rates. Now, um. Sorry, I just thought of one, one other thing here. Uh, the mayor did file an order that seemed like a blanket. Um. It was like a blanket order to give us a lot of flexibility in the way that we structured some of this conversation and the strange, the transfers tonight. And I um, I can't find it at the moment, but I, I felt that that, that order gave us a lot of latitude to. Be flexible and creative. And perhaps we could have under the suspension of the rules here, that the mayor speak to that order that was fired, filed earlier today.
So there's a request to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor, uh, Counselor Lisi had a question for you. Did you hear it?
I would just, uh, just a couple of things. So there, there's no general order that gives the council latitude to make transfers from stabilization. Um, to that end, I agree with. Interpretation, that was also the intent of my office. And so there's no, there's no order before the council to uh, use stabilization to lower the, the levy. Um, and I agree with Counselor Bacon that given that the budget is balanced and we're now about six hundred thousand dollar surplus. With the budget balance, that there's no need to now go to stabilization. Um, mind you, we'll tap that money to get us through the end of the fiscal year. Um, and given. The fact that we've been using CARES Act money to supplement overtime and police and fire for COVID-related cases. We may have additional expenses that we need stabilization to go, to get us through the end of, end of uh, the fiscal year. And I think the fact that we've already gained one point three on it over the last uh, seven months alone is a good sign for the city. I think if. Intent is to use our. You know, robust stabilization fund in the future to lower, to lower the tax obligation of commercial and residential owners, we could revisit that when. When we formulate a budget spring for, for the next fiscal year. But at this point, as far as I'm concerned, as far as the executive branch is concerned, the budget is balanced. And it's now the obligation of the council to set the tax rate uh, with that information. So I have, I, I really have no further role. And I defer to the council on making sure the, the tax rate's set in time.
Counselor Leahy had his hand up. Counselor Leahy?
Oh yeah, thank you, Todd. Uh, Counselor President. Um, I was actually gonna say this, something similar to what Mary Morris. Uh, had to talk about revisiting this. And because this is a rainy day, I mean, this is pandemic. And our homeowners and our businesses are suffering. Um, what can we do to make their lives easier? What can we do to make? A Hoyle person's life easier? This is something I think that we should definitely revisit. Now, now my question, I'm sure we've probably got an email somewhere, like everyone else. I'm trying to go through two, two computer screens. Uh, I guess my first question is, uh, mayor, um, usually we get a letter in, in states, but the mayor recommends for. Um, us setting the tax rate. Where, where is that fall today? What is your recommendation for us?
Um, that's not the case. I, I give recommendations occasionally over the years, but um, I have no recommendation and I defer to the legislative branch. I, I mean, at, at least the last five years, I haven't provided a recommendation. It's, it's, it's the purview of the council. Um, I don't wanna micromanage that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, I see that we're in difficult times and I, I really respect uh, Counselor Murphy's thoughts on this, but. Um, as the mayor said and, and, and Counselor McGivern, that the, the budget is balanced and I think it's our rule now. To uh, to set the tax rate and so we get the tax bills out and we don't fall in a position we did a few years ago where we ended up uh. Not being able to send the tax bills out and uh, ended up having to borrow a couple hundred thousand uh. And had to pay interest or pay a couple hundred thousand dollars in interest. So um, it's gonna be a difficult vote. Um, but uh, I think everybody, uh, residential, fortunately in businesses, uh, looks like. You know, we're gonna have to pay a little bit more this year, um, no matter what rate we set. Um, and it's, it's, it's a difficult vote, but it's something I think that in order to get the tax bills out, that we should take care of this tonight. Thank you.
Ca- Counselor Murphy.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, again, I uh. You know, I'm disappointed that we, we, we didn't think uh, knowing the situation in terms of employment. Knowing the situation in terms of, of. Uh, businesses and, and they're, many of them closing or, or being unable to be open full-time. Uh, that we weren't looking, knowing we've had a good, robust stabilization fund with interest. I would have hoped that we would have been looking. To use some of this money to try to make. The financial situation is palatable for all of our residents and all of our businesses as much as possible. And uh. You know, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, it's not something that we, we can look at now and I. With all due respect, I think trying to look at it for next fiscal year, hopefully we're gonna be in a much better situation come. May, June, and July, and hopefully our businesses are starting to come back and hopefully our residents are getting their jobs back. Uh. In my opinion, that's seven or eight months too late right now. So I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear we can't do anything there. I wish we, and I, and I wish I had. Seen this weeks ago and might have been able to make some suggestions. And I know I, I respect the mayor's opinion. I did respect. And he gave me a quick answer with my request this afternoon. Uh, but again, I think. If we don't do something like that, we're putting, we're putting residents to be unable to pay their taxes and then they're gonna end up paying higher fees. Businesses unable to pay some of their taxes. I mean, we're, we're talking a. Kind of a, a revolution expense that just keeps on going and going. And we just can't. To me, we can't, we, we shouldn't, we should have been able to do something different and I, I'm sorry that we didn't and uh.
It's not that I disagree, Counselor Murphy. I just wanna shift the paradigm to some extent, but the city does have a stabilization fund of. Of over fourteen million dollars. Uh, but unlike the federal government, local governments have to balance their budgets and. I think we need to, you know, continue to pressure our federal delegation in Congress to provide relief to, to cities and towns. Uh, a one-time payment of twelve hundred dollars to most Americans isn't enough. The fact that the majority of PPP loans went to the biggest corporations. Um, isn't ethical. And so the failures of our federal government can't fall on the, on the, on the feet of Hoyle taxpayers. And we have to be prepared for rainy days in the future. And I think we're doing the best we can to weather that.
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney.
Uh. In, in, in ref, in reference to this discussion, uh. You know, that the Hoyle taxpayers are gonna have to pay a little more. Well, maybe some Hoyle taxpayers are gonna have to pay a little more, but some are gonna have to pay a lot more of their income. So once again, this is graduated. You know, the people who can afford to pay. The, the money, it's a little more, but for the people who can't afford taxing, it's a lot more. So we need to keep this discussion in perspective as to what we're doing. And uh. You, you, you know, it, it's, it's a delicate balance, because once again, when we're talking a little more. For some people, it's a lot more. Thank you.
And just to, to let everyone be clear, um, I understood exactly what Counselor Murphy was talking about. We, we have asked for this before in the past. Um, but before us today, with regards to the stabilization order. It is uh, for a specific purpose, transferred to general fund from stabilization. It does not say to help offset the tax rate. So we can amend uh, financial transfers. That's. Just the way the rule is. So I just like to remind people of that. So what is before us isn't exactly what I, I know Counselor Murphy would like to do. That's something that would. We need a specific order for that. So with that, Counselor Anderson Burgos was next, and then we'll come back around here.
So my fear is for, you know, the, the elderly who are on a fixed income. And then the businesses who has suffered to this pandemic. And I guess my question is. Do we have any safety net for them? Like, is there like some type of waiver? What kind of? Anything throughout the city that we have that, that can actually protect the residents and the businesses? Is there anything in our laws, anything that we can do to provide some sort of assistance, especially during this pandemic? It's not that we expected this. Um, but I also don't want these people to suffer. And that, that's my main concern is. You know, we're all going through this together and I just want to make sure that there are no, that no one's left behind and that everyone's being helped.
Tony, do you wanna speak to the abatements or?
Um. There are, for elderly over sixty-seven, we do have exemptions which are in place right now. So. Um, they file and they do have income requirements. And we've had a lot of. Um. Requests for those. We've mailed them out. We've been very helpful with all the um, elderly people in the city. Uh, making copies for them, making sure everybody gets their right paperwork. Um, we did see a slight increase in some of those. This year for elderly exemptions. We also have the veterans exemptions who are out of work and um. You know, disabled veterans. We also have the, you know, abatement process. So. We expected a lot more this year because of the COVID. So we did put, you know, money aside. We've. Built up a little, you know, say war chest for, for abatements for this year. So. Um, you know, if it merits abatements, we will, we will process the abatements for the um, for the public. Um, they have to file, the onus is always on the taxpayer to prove our value wrong. And you know, the more information they have, the better off they are. And you know, through appraisals, through uh, sales synopsis, through whatever. But we do work with the public all the time. And you know, uh, you know, going back to your question now, Juan. And we'll, we'll try and get um, you know, as many elderly people who. Qualify for the exemptions in the program going. You know, as many elderly people who qualify for the exemptions in the program going forward.
Thank you, Tony.
Linda, I see your hand is up or is that from before?
It's a leftover, sorry.
Okay, um. Counselor Lisi, Counsel McGivern, then Counsel Murphy.
Um, thank you. So, um, Counsel McGee, would you mind just reading the order that we're discussing? Cause I'm not seeing an agenda, um, anywhere.
Sure.
Uh, there are two of them. Item two.
The one, the one relative to stabilization.
Yeah, so there's two of them, ju- just to be clear. There's one that says order that they're here to be appropriated. Six hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, transfer to the general fund from stabilization, then item number. Number four, I apologize, number five is the same thing, but that's the eight hundred eighty-three thousand seven fifty-eight eighty-five cents. So as, as a reminder, when we took this up Tuesday night, we had the eight eighty-three in front of us. We sent that in and then we got an update from the mayor, I think it was the next day. That they were going to reduce it to the six fourteen. And that was set up in the special meeting. So those are the two for stabilization.
So, um, so just to, you know, the way the language is written, I would say it's completely open-ended. I, I think that there, you know, it just says. General funds, transfer, um, I'm sorry, transfer a dollar amount from stabilization to the general fund. It doesn't. Give a reason why, perhaps the intent of the mayor, um, was different, but I think that, um, you know, it, we. We, we can, we have the order before us to act on, and I think that there, there is an opportunity there i- if you will. Um, additionally, when I look at his order. Um, that came in earlier today, just before the finance committee, meaning it says, um. Per Hoyok City Charter, Section twenty-two, I'm hereby authorizing and recommending passage of the financial orders, including any late filed orders on the agenda. For tonight's special meeting of the city council on this eighteenth day of December, to the deadline needed to send out our tax bills and so on. So, I mean, here's where I was under the impression that we had, um, you know, wide latitude to, to entertain. Uh, you know, o- other options because it, it does include late file orders and, and. Um, I believe that a late file order could still be, um, filed at this point in time. So. I, I really do think that it's, it's a, it's an, it's a sound option. I think. We just need to make sure that it is reflective and being applied to, uh, an appropriate line item in the budget. As opposed to, um, you know, being used to quote unquote, balance the budget.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Um, I respectfully disagree, although I, I commend Counsel Murphy for thinking. Um, the way he is, not thinking out of a box. This is something that you could choose to use stabilization dollars, um, for. Uh, for the purpose of reducing the levy itself. It's not what is in front of us for that intent. It's in front of us to reduce the levy by a transfer to reduce the deficit, which the deficit went away. Therefore, the intent of the mayor that what was put in front of us is no longer there in my humble opinion. And that's why I, I think we're, although it's a great idea to talk about, and as Counsel McGee said, we've asked mayors to do it in the past. Uh, no mayor's ever done it, you know, Springfield Mayor did it this year, but it hasn't been done. But I, I see, I don't see how you can stretch it by any means to say it's in front of us tonight. I, I just want to say something about property tax because, uh, I know it's, it's, I think it's all property tax, all property owners who pay property tax. Property tax is ugly and it's, it's our taxing scheme, not because we want it to be our taxing scheme. We need to raise revenue. Pay for the services we do, but it's the state who dictates what, what municipalities can use for taxes. You know, they give us a very, very small percentage of meals tax if we choose, a very, very small percentage of hotel tax if we choose. Excise tax, which helps, but the bulk of how we're supposed to fund our budget is property tax. Property tax, no matter how you look at it, is ugly. It's not our choice, but it's what we have to live with. It's, it's an ugly beast and we, and it hurts everybody. And we have to do our best to be fair because it hurts the elderly, it hurts, it hurts young families, it hurts anybody who owns property. It hurts business and, and, and it's, it's unfair, but that's the way the state does it because. They don't want property tax as part of their revenue scheme. You know, they, they don't get yelled at when you went, if anybody went to the Hoyok file today, you're funding the state budget with everything you bought. You know, if anybody bought, you know, bought a new car or a used car, you're funding the state budget with the stuff you bought. Your paycheck this week, next week, you're funding the state and federal government with what you get paid for. We get to, as, as municipal people, we get to use property tax. It's ugly, it hurts. But it's, it's that necessary evil until the state wakes up and says there's a better way to do it.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, thank you again, and this will be the last time I, I plead, but I'll plead again. Uh, and, and going along with what Counsel, Counsel Lisi said, uh, I mean, we've had. All kinds of late file things for this meeting. I mean, we were getting things at four thirty. Five o'clock related to this, so I guess I'm wondering, and if I recall, and I may be wrong, but I. Think when we were in chambers last year, we had. Uh, late file things coming in because certain things didn't pass and we came back and did some other stuff. So I wonder. If the mayor would consider. Uh, with the eight hundred eighty-three thousand, making it a transfer to general fund to lower the property tax levy. Which would be specific and would then have hopefully his endorsement, uh. On the same order that he got just going to transfer to general fund and make it specifically to reduce the tax levy by that amount. Uh, and, and, I mean, I don't know how. I mean, I know I got things on my computer, I know, on late files, so I'm assuming that's how it would happen again, but. Uh, again, I think we are in. Uh, citywide, countrywide, and I don't disagree that we need to get federal aid and that, that's true, but. That doesn't help our taxpayers right now and, and they need, they need some kind of relief. Uh, this would still allow us to run our government, to try to do what we can, uh. And again, I have no problem if we get money and we, and we've put some of that back in stabilization and do some other things, I'm fine with that too, but. I just think the time, if we, if we are thinking about doing this and it makes sense, this is the time to do it. Thank you. Then I would ask the mayor to consider filing a late file to do that.
Mayor, do you have a late file or?
Uh, nope, so it was before the councils, before the council. Um, only the mayor can initiate, uh, an appropriation or, uh, a transfer when it comes to finances. Uh, but don't plan to do that tonight or before the deadline is set the tax rate, um. And even if it was before you, I would likely veto anything of that nature. I think it's important that we get through the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, with the resources before us, um, and I don't think the city of Hoyok should be doing the job of the federal government.
So what we have before us is the orders that I've read, which is one, two, four and five.
And the motion.
So the motion was to send them back to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, like Counsel Bartley, I'm sorry, Counsel Bartley just raised, throws his hand.
Yeah, just a point of order. I, I, I don't know if, if Counsel Murphy wants to. I mean, it sounded like the debate was pull out, pull out the vote. That's what I heard. So is just through the chair to Counsel Murphy, is that, do you want a separate vote?
Uh, I would like to have.
Okay.
Well, I mean, so.
We can do that. We can do that.
That's what it sounded like to me, miss, Mr. President, so thank you.
There is, there is no motion, but we can do that. So with that. Once again, that's why I asked the question. Uh, with that, we can take one. Which is the transfer of the five million six sixty-four. We can take. Four, which is the other five million four sixty-four. So that's one and four. And send them back to the auditor. Is that a motion?
A motion.
Second, one and four is to send back to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Now we have items two and four, uh. Yeah, two and five, sorry, two and five are dealing with the stabilization, the six hundred thousand. And then the eight hundred thousand. Counselor Murphy, what's your motion for that?
I would like to take the eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollar transfer and, uh, and approve it.
But then that, but just to be clear, if you're just approving, it's going to general free cash. It's not going to stabilization.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Alright, alright. So the eight hundred, the eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. Which was number five, you would like if to be approved, that was seconded. Uh, under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I continue with my objection that the intent of this order is no longer before us. There is no deficit within the budget. This, this, both these orders were filed to reduce the deficit, to balance the budget. Uh, it is not the intent of the mayor. We heard the mayor, even if we pass something like this tonight, he's going to veto it. If we pass either one of these tonight, we might as well adjourn. Because we're going to have to wait for the veto and have another special meeting in a week or two to receive the veto back. Or if we don't have a special meeting, we're just going to go without a tax rate this year. And last time we did this, it cost the taxpayers fifty-six thousand dollars to put in interest to borrow money. So let, let's, let's get on with what we're supposed to be doing tonight and that's looking at the tax rate itself.
Mr. President?
Counsel Greeney.
Counsel McGivern's right. I, I agree with, uh, Counselor Murphy's sentiment and what he's trying to do. But Counsel McGivern is right on this issue. Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yep, thanks. Um, this is the first time I've spoken all night and I commend Counsel Murphy. This is the same thing I tried to do a couple of years ago to use stabilization or reduce the levy. I was voted down fourteen to one. So, and I, I'd vote for this tonight and now I'm going to be, want to vote against it and only for one reason. Because it's going to go to the general fund with no guarantee that'll go against the sta- be. Put back against stabilization. I, I'm sorry, you're in the same situation I was back then.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So motion is withdrawn. So we are back to. One, uh, or two and five going to the auditor. Is that what we're going to do?
Yep.
There's, there's, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
I just would have it. Now we're on to item three, which is from Counsel McGee, or at the city council, set the minimum residential factor for. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
See, um, I'm looking through our packet here, Counsel President, uh, President McGee. Um, do we have, did we get an agenda attached to it?
Um, we did get an update. I'm not sure if it's the same thing you're referring to Counsel Leahy. There was an up, an update from, um. Tony Delude, so it was like a series of emails and a sense of Tanya sent something and then his came in after that. And that gave the new, new rates. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. Yes.
Do you not have that?
New options.
Uh, I've, I've, I have three different computers going here. I'm checking the third now. Yes, I do, four, four fifty-seven.
Yeah, it came in, uh, it came in just before finance.
Yes, that's why I hadn't seen it yet. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any, anyone else, just so we're on the same page as to which. We are using. Uh, Counsel Sullivan, your hands up?
Sorry, once again, I forgot.
No, 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 no worries. I'm just making sure. Counsel Tomlin, your hands up.
Yeah, are we, uh, doing the vote now to set a rate?
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure everyone has the, uh, proper. Form that was sent by Tony at about three minutes before five. Anyone not have that, everyone on the same page? Counsel Greeney does not have that.
Todd, I believe I have it, but I, the number wasn't there for the, uh, the rate, I believe. The cost, a thousand?
Can you put it up? Can you put it on the page?
Hold on, let me just turn it over to, to Tony. Tony, with, with the new one coming in very late. Um, is there, and Counsel Greeney obviously doesn't, uh, have it. Is there a way that you can put it up on the screen or help us with the numbers, please?
I can't put it on the screen. I'm not the, cause I, you know, I, I wouldn't know how to do that, first of all. And I don't think I have the capability from where I am. I'm just.
Mr. President?
Counsel, uh, uh, alright, Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Uh, can you ask Jeff and see if he could?
He might be able to. He was sent the email also.
Jeff, can you do it?
If Counsel Greeney is calling in, would he be able to see the screen?
No.
He can't.
If, if you have it, it'll go up on the TV, right?
TV.
I can see the screen on the TV, yeah.
Correct.
I'm looking at the TV.
Hi, Howie.
If you're share.
If, um, I mean.
If you share your screen, it should come up on the TV.
I can also give, uh, Anthony co-host privileges to be able to share.
Yeah, but I, I'm on my regular computer. I don't know how to pull that up from, I'm on, uh, my laptop. Cause Zoom doesn't.
I also don't mind doing it. It's.
Counsel Lisi?
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out who didn't get the email.
Counsel Greeney does not have it.
I have, I probably have the email, but I, I can't look at the email because I'm on the phone.
Right, right.
Copy of options table, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Here we go.
Yep. Yep. That's it.
Okay, that's good.
There's, there's six or seven pages with this. And, you know, I mean, there's, it all, it goes from one point five to one point seven five for options. Um, last year we were at point seven, seven oh six.
So let's go to that page, because we usually stay pretty close to where we were in the fall of the previous year.
Yeah, if you go, um. If you move up the residential, yeah, if you move up the residential factor, up a couple pages, uh, Jeff.
Given that it's Jeff's first time, um, navigating this document, I think it's, it's going to be challenging. So again, I'm happy to help.
It's also a spreadsheet where you have to go, not just up and down, you have to go back across, back.
Well, that, that goes show everything right there. So those numbers on the page show, if it just went up a couple. A couple pages, you're going to go, be right around where we were last year. So.
Yeah, it's where it should be.
Lisi offered to help. Can we have Lisi do this so we can see?
Jeff, are you all set or?
Sorry, I was also trying to help, uh, Counsel Vacan get back in.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you didn't need to scroll down?
Yeah, just to scroll down.
Scroll down.
There you go, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, I think.
Keep going, keep going.
You want to be in like the one point six three, one point six seven, one point, yeah.
That, that's pretty good right there. That's pretty good. That's about, you know.
Meeting ID and passport for you.
Okay, so there you go. And Counsel Vacan is back in, Jeff, or no, or?
She's gonna call in.
Okay.
Jeff, can you zoom in a little bit? It's too small. I can't see and I got glasses on.
Check those readers.
Thank you. I got readers on, no, no helping. Thank you.
Alright, so there, there's that and we're just waiting for Counsel Vacan to get back in. She had some issues, so.
Can I make up a motion?
Well, I, hold on, let's wait for Counsel Vacan to be fair because she did have an issue pop up and she's just trying to get back in now. Well, I, hold on, let's wait for Counsel Vakin to be fair, because she did have an issue pop up, and she's just trying to get back in now. So let's give it a, a minute so we can get her back in.
I, I tried to my best to get everything to you guys. I mean, I, I-
Tony, you did a great job. I thank you very much, you, Tanya, everyone else. Um, I know things change at the last minute. It's and I, and I do agree with Counsel, I, with Counsel Bartley. This is not the way uh this should be coming to us, but things have happened. Um, and our job is to set the rate now. Um, so with that, we try to inform everyone exactly what happened. I know it's not the perfect situation, but you know, let's, let's try and get this rate uh done, so we get the bills out correctly, not be assess penalties and anything else that we've seen in the past.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor.
Um, no, I just wanted to say that I, Tony, I did get your email, and I have it here, so thank you so much, um. Okay. Feel bad about anything. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
I didn't go that far, Counsel. I just said thank you. No, I'm just kidding. Hey, Tony, thank you very much for everything. Um, Jeff, did, were we able to get Counsel Vakin back in?
Uh she's, she did say she's going to call in, so I'm just watching the participant's screen to see, to, to let her in.
And does she have the number and stuff? I know that was, we had two numbers, so hopefully she's, she's not calling them up. She is calling in, or no?
Looks, yeah, I just-
Okay, perfect.
I'm guessing that's her.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Counsel Vakin, welcome back.
Uh, thank you.
We were waiting for you. We were waiting.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Alright, so we can hear you perfectly. Um, if you have anything, just, just yell it out, and then that way we'll stop and, and just make sure. Um-
Okay.
So for everyone, the rate uh is up on the board. Thank you, Jeffrey, for getting it up there. Uh kinda in the area that we, we normally look to when dealing with this. Uh, just as a reminder, um, call on the counselor. Counsel Tomlin was first, and they'll give a rate. And then there can be another one, and another one. We'll do with the first three. We'll go, uh, I do believe, Joe, correct me on this one. We give the first three, but we start with three and work our way back to the first. I think that's how it's always been.
Correct.
Alright.
We can't accept, even once we dispose, if we do dispose of an amendment, we can't accept a new amendment till we take care of all three at least one time.
Correct. So, I just explained it, so given example, Counsel Tomlin raises his hand first. He wants to give a rate, he gives a rate. If it's seconded, then we'll go, if someone else wants to give a rate, we'll do that. We'll do a third, then that'll stop, and we'll start voting on them. And then once the three packages up, we'll go on. If nothing passes, we'll go again for another three. Anyone have a question on that?
I do. What is the rate right now? What's the rate?
Oh yeah, so the rate currently is for residential nineteen point oh eight, for commercial thirty-nine point seven three.
Thirty-nine point seven three?
Yep. So with that, I'm gonna go to Counsel Tomlin, then to Counsel Bartley. So Counsel Tomlin first.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I like the uh, the CIP shift to be at one six three point one zero.
Second.
Well, let me just- Alright, so that was, just so everyone heard it, one point six three one zero, which then would give us a nineteen point three eight residential, forty point three five commercial. And that was seconded. Counselor Bartley.
Uh, I'll make a motion to make it one point six five four zero.
So that would be one point six five four zero, you said?
That's right.
Okay, just making sure.
And what does that do to the rate, please?
Uh, we're gonna get, we're going down to there. So for commer- uh for residential, that would be nineteen point one eight for commercial, forty point nine two.
I'll second that.
And that was seconded. Is there a third? Just looking for hands. Seeing-
Uh, I'll, I'll split the difference just as an option, um, and go with um one point six four three with the residential at nineteen twenty-eight and commercial at forty sixty-five.
So that was one point six four three zero? Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it.
Alright, so those are our three currently.
Wha- what was that residential, Mr. President?
So it was one point six four three zero. If you're up on the screen, it's la- item one sixty-five. If you scroll across, it would be nineteen point two eight for residential and forty point six five for commercial. Alright, I will call the roll. If I call your name, it's either yes or no for option three, which is at one six four three zero. Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counsel Bartley.
No.
Counsel Greeney.
No.
Counsel Hernandez. Yeah, if you're muted, please unmute, so we can hear you. Counsel Hernandez. Counsel Lehi.
Well, just point of order, Mr. President. Do, do we have the choice not to vote?
Well, I don't know if, well, that's why I don't know if it's muted or not, Counselor.
Okay, I'm just gonna scroll down and just-
I'm looking.
Take a look. Yeah, I didn't know we couldn't, couldn't vote.
No, no, no. Counsel, once again with Zoom, and as we saw with Counsel Vakin-
Well, it looks like you knocked out the meeting. I don't even see her name listed, Mr. President.
Right, so.
How do we do that?
Well, if, if she comes back in, we can ask her. It's as if someone walked out to use the phone call or go to the bathroom. They come back in, we ask them if they're vote. That's, that's how we do it. So Counsel Lehi.
Um, yes.
Counsel Avon Martinez.
Hmm, no, we're gonna, can I ask a question quickly? Are we gonna go back to the other ones that were off, or uh?
Yeah. Just as a reminder, if this fails, we'll go back to two, then to one.
Okay, no.
Alright, so Counsel Martinez, no. Counsel Lisi.
Yes.
Counsel McGee, no. Counsel McGivern?
No.
Counsel Murphy?
No.
Counsel Sullivan?
No.
Counsel Tomlin?
No.
Counsel Vakin?
No.
Counsel Hernandez, is she back in? No, I don't see. Alright, so we'll go to number two. Uh, so that, that was, the vote was one, two, three.
Three.
Three, yes.
Nine.
Nine, no, one missing, or absent. So off to number two. Option two is one point six five four zero. If we scroll down to that, that's one seventy-six. That has a residential of nineteen point one eight and a commercial of forty point nine two. So I'll go back in order. Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counsel Bartley.
Yes.
Counsel Greeney.
Yes.
Counsel Hernandez. Counsel Lehi.
No.
Counsel Avon Martinez.
Yes.
Counsel Lisi.
No.
Counsel McGee, no. Counsel McGivern?
No.
Counsel Murphy?
No.
Counsel Sullivan?
No.
Counsel Tomlin?
No.
Counsel Vakin?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, and the yes. Seven, and the no, one, absent. One, two-
Seven, no.
Four, five, six, seven. Yeah, seven. I got it. That's strong counter. Alright, so that one did not pass either. We're back to number one, which is one point six three one zero, which then, if we scroll back up to there, that's one fifty-three on the board. That would be residential nineteen uh point three eight, commercial forty point three five. Okay, so, any questions? Are there questions?
Thirty cents more.
Is, Mr. President, is Tony still with us?
Tony is here, yes.
Can Tony tell us what that would do to the average homeowner's tax bill?
Tony?
Four thousand and twenty-seven.
Compared to?
Three, seven, seven, two last year.
Yeah, that's thirty cents in residential.
Right, it's substantial.
I mean, that's on a residential, just on the tax rate, just on the tax rate on a, at the average price on two oh seven. That's sixty-one dollars for the year.
Compared to last year? What was the increase?
Yeah, with uh, with the value increase, it's about two fifty-two for the year.
For an average home?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
About the commercial average?
My commercial average. I gotta do that. Hold on one second. Commercial. One seven.
Sixty-two cents.
Yeah, who, who's that?
This is Libby. I was able to get back in.
Alright, Counsel Hernandez. We, just to fill you in, I'm not sure if you saw on the TV, but we did rate three, or the proposed number three, then number two. We're now back to number one, which, and we haven't voted on it yet. The assessor is getting us some numbers, but that, that one was uh offered at one point six three one zero. If you're looking at the computer screen or on your TV, you go to one fifty-three, and you go across, it'll be nineteen thirty-eight for residential, forty thirty-five for commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony, what's the average uh commercial? I, I can do the math for you.
Well, it's gonna be, it's, it, on the average commercial, it's gonna go up at least a thousand dollars.
What is the average commercial rate?
It's a lot of money for a bodega.
Tony.
I mean, that's just commercials. I just did commercials.
Right, so what's the average for the uh commercials? I can do-
The average was like, like six forty-nine.
Six forty-nine thousand?
Yeah. So that's about a thousand dollar increase. Cause you're, you, you know, you, you, you are, you are, it's almost, you know, two, two and a half times the tax rate from the uh residential, so. Or two and a quarter.
Mr. President?
Counsel Vakin?
Just one more question to Tony.
Yep.
Um, the commer- I know the home values went up about five percent. If I remember correctly, the commercial values, I think, decreased.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm using, the, the mall is part of this also, so if I were to take out the mall, those would probably be cut in half. So you'd probably have a five hundred dollar increase for, you know, for the um-
Okay.
Commercial side.
Tony, I'm getting four, four oh two, not a thousand.
What?
And?
Yeah, they, they said about a, about five hundred.
What percentage did the commercial values go down?
They, well, it went down about forty-five million total.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Counsel McGivern, you had a question?
Tony, you said, when you did the averages, you were using the new averages though, correct? As far as the average tax-
Yes, that is correct.
And you know, and I know, and I think we all know, that averages can be tweaked any way we want. Single-family homes have one average, two-family homes have another average, and our multi, our, our apartment buildings may have an average residential, but they're really commercial property, but their tax rate is residential. So no matter how you look at it, we can twist it, and we can turn it around. There is no fair way to do property tax. But, you know, I think what's in front of us is something that is a compromise and makes some sense.
Anyone else for Tony? Any other questions? No? Okay, so we'll go back to option one, which is on, it's highlighted on the board at one six three one zero. I'll do a roll call. If I call your name, you're voting yes for that rate. If you vote no, you're voting against. Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Greeney?
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Lehi?
No.
Levon Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
No.
McGee, no. Counsel McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vakin?
No.
So that does not pass as well. That was three ten. Uh, go to another round of three. I see Counsel Lisi's hand up first. Give me one second. I just gotta write a few things down to start a new, a new round here. Counselor Lisi?
Uh, I'd like to remake my motion for the one point six four three oh rate, uh, sorry, shift. Um, which is the-
Did someone say something? I missed that. Who, who seconded that? Who said second?
I'll second it.
Well, I, I, there was background noise. I'm not forcing anyone to say a second. I, someone said something, I-
No, I was typing out, but I was, I was too quick. Sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Alright, so, alright. So, the request is one point six four three zero, which give a residential of nineteen twenty-eight, commercial forty sixty-five. Is there a second? Uh, not a second, but a s- uh second rate request. I see Counsel Bartley's hand up.
Yes, Mr. President.
Up, Counsel Vakin, do you have a question?
Um, I wanted to propose a rate.
We have hands up, though.
Well, she's, she's, she doesn't have the ability. We're trying to be fair.
It's a question of who goes first, though.
Alright, hold on. I saw Counsel Bartley, then Counsel Vakin went in.
We have to go in any order.
Hold on, hold on, wait, everyone. I know it's a little tough this way. Counsel Bartley, your hands down, are you not?
Well, it was, it was, I, I was just, you were, I just wanted to let you fit it. So I had my hand up, so.
Yeah, so Counsel Bartley, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'll, I'll adjust mine to, uh, last time I was at one point six five four. I'll adjust mine to one point six five two zero.
Second.
Thank you.
Alright, so one point six five two zero gives a residential of nineteen twenty and a commercial of forty eighty-five. Alright, so one point six five two zero gives a residential of nineteen twenty, and a commercial of forty eighty-five. That was seconded. Counselor Sullivan had his hand up.
Yeah, somehow, somehow I've completely lost the ability here to raise my hand, or to even see on the screens or the one that was sent to us, the rates. The one I'd like to propose, and you'll have to help me with this, is the one with a nineteen point five one residential that keeps the commercial rate under forty dollars.
Mike, that's one six one six zero.
Yeah, you couldn't, you, there's two for um nineteen fifty-one. You can do, yeah, one point six one five zero.
Yep. Counselor Sullivan, it's one point six one five zero, and that would give you nineteen fifty-one, and then thirty-nine ninety-five. One six one six zero would give you the same nineteen fifty-one, but a thirty-nine point nine eight.
I don't wanna get into trying to understand that, but uh, let's go with the one six one five zero.
Alright, so one six one five zero is what is being requested. I do not hear a second.
Second.
Alright. With that, we'll start, those are our three. We'll start with that one first. It's highlighted. I know Counselor Sullivan doesn't have it on the board, but it is at one point six one five zero. Once again, the commercial, or I mean, the residential would be nineteen fifty-one, and the commercial would be thirty-nine ninety-five. I will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for that. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No.
Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Graney?
No.
Counselor Hernandez?
No.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor LeBron Martinez?
No.
C- Counselor Lisi?
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
No.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
Four nine, that does not pass. We go to item or number two, which was the one point six five two zero. We'll scroll down to that so you see it. Of which that would be a residential nineteen twenty, commercial forty eighty-seven. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Hernandez?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Lisi?
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Sullivan?
No.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yeah. Seven.
Hey, we got a winner.
There you go. So that would be seven. That passes. So the rate is passed at one point six five two zero, leaving a residential at nineteen twenty and a commercial at forty eighty-seven. Alright.
Motion to reconsider our action.
Second.
Motion is to reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Special, Mr. President?
Uh, I'd say the noes have it. Counselor McGivern?
I'd like to reconsider our action to, to talk about a few things. I think this increase on the commercial will have a incredibly detrimental effect on everybody. People who own residential property, people who, you know, go to schools, people who work in this city, people who, you know, who own and operate a business. This is over a dollar increase on average of, of property bills that are much higher than residential property bills themselves. I, I, I'm not optimistic we can keep the rate under forty dollars with what's been handed to us, but as I said, the state is the one that dictates this scheme. And, and we know, you know, all malls across the country have been, have been killed, you know, even before COVID. And right now, we have, we have to deal with what we have. But I, I really think in the long run, we need to protect business to protect the people who live in this city. I think it goes hand in hand. And I don't think we had any, much discussion about that this evening, and I'd like to reconsider our action to see if we can bring the commercial rate down a little bit.
Nice.
So the motion was to reconsider it. Counselor Martinez, what'd you say?
I will second that.
Uh, and that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, most.
Can we have a nice second? And I think this, yeah, go yes and no, we can see we're saying yes or no.
But with the screen, the way it is, I won't be able to see everybody, but let me, C- Counselor Graney first, cause I heard him.
Let's take, let's, let's take down that rate screen. Take down that rate screen.
Yeah, we don't need the root screen anymore. Uh, Mr. President, uh, I think according to uh Counselor McGivern, he would like to keep the, the uh, commercial rate down. But if we reconsider, I wanna keep the residential rate down, and you know, I don't wanna reconsider that. You know, I could reconsider one of them, like keeping the, the residential rate, what we did, and then debating about the commercial rate, but I don't think that we should have to go back and debate both. I don't know if we could split that off, but m- my, my, my reasoning is to keep the, the residential rate low as we've got it, and not reconsider both, but reconsider the commercial rate. I don't know, Mr. McGivern.
Can't do that, Counselor Graney.
Can't do it.
It's based on a chart.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Well, hold on, hold on. Counselor Lisi, then Counselor Tallman?
Uh, thank you. So the original motion by Counselor Tallman, which I seconded, was for um a residential rate at nineteen point thirty-eight and a commercial rate at forty point thirty-five, and that really is um nearly to the penny, a thirty cent increase on either side. Now, given that uh residential um home values have increased in the past year, and commercial values have decreased in the year, I think the, I, I think the most equitable way to sort of distribute the um burden is by bringing um residential tax rate. Am I still there?
Yeah, you're there.
Um, bringing the residential tax rate down um within the twenty to twenty-eight range, or twenty to thirty ra- nineteen, sorry, nineteen dollars and twenty cents to nineteen dollars and thirty cents um range, um so that the uh commercial side, they, I mean, I think we really do need to keep it, you know, around like forty dollars and, and really, I don't wanna see more than fifty cents, but I do understand the hardships on, on our residents, especially given the increase in home values, and I think that perhaps that the, the loss in value on the business side may um help businesses and commercial taxpayers weather the increase on their side. So I think we really need to start looking between nineteen dollars and twenty cents and nineteen dollars and thirty cents within, within that range, and hone in on something in there.
We're at nineteen twenty.
Counselor Tallman? Alright, you're down.
Uh, yeah, I, I wish we would go back to the, the original motion we had, and uh, we had a couple of good rates there, I think. This is sort of a little bit higher, but um considering the, the increase in the, the, the cost of the um, the homeowners, um, I, I wanted to go with something reasonable, and I know that the, the business rate is, is really high, but um, I, I don't see any other way of doing this. I mean, we made the vote. Uh, there were seven people that voted, and I don't ever recall ever have to reconsider uh tax rate. I've been doing this for about twenty-one years, and we never reconsidered a tax rate. Once the vote was made, it was made, and uh, if there was seven votes, or if there was eight votes, that was it. We signed the sheet and went off, so I, I think we should stay where we're at. Thank you.
Anyone further? Uh, Counselor Sullivan, sorry, yeah.
I think I got my hand up. I, I know I always forget to take it down, but it's up.
Well, hold on, I mean, like, go ahead, go ahead. I'll look at the screen.
I'm, I'm gonna take it down ahead of time. Listen, commercial values have not decreased. Average commercial values have decreased. Most commercial values have increased. They just have not been offset by the devaluation of one commercial property in this city called the mall. Alright? So let's all, let's all get that straight. Alright?
Oh, I wanna see.
Everybody else, think, think back to June this year. If, if you really, really, really wanna cut.
Hold on, Je- Jeffrey, could you mute others? So Counselor Sullivan speaking, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Sullivan.
I- if you wanna be fair to the tax, if you wanna reduce the tax rate for the average homeowner, for the average business owner, you go back to June and all the votes where nobody cut spending. Reduce spending, reduce tax. That, that, that's that simple. So I hope everybody remembers tonight's discussion in December, next June, when nobody wants to cut spending. Take a hard look at it. This is a lesson that goes, I, I've been on this for five years now, and nobody seems to remember this in June. So that's not gonna solve the problem tonight, alright? But really, in all honesty, everybody take a look at, we can say all we want about senior citizens, uh, people on reduced income, uh, the, the, the extraordinary times we live in, alright? But right now, we're talking about seventy-five cents a day to go to that nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents a tax rate. Seventy-five cents a day. And everything else, I think, is just dramatics. That's not gonna kill anybody. But that's what we need to do to keep our businesses that, that fuel this city, that allow the people to pay for their houses, have jobs, be employed, put their kids through school, right? To have jobs in the city, to stay in the city, is to keep that tax rate under forty dollars. You wanna, you, you move any other way, we're the highest in the state. Good luck with that.
Counselor LeBron Martinez?
Okay, um, which one was that? I'm trying to look here at the sheet, cause I keep writing all these. There was, do we, was there any moment, there was a one on nineteen oh eight? Was there a nineteen oh eight year at all?
That was the original.
The original that we have.
That was last year's tax rate.
Okay, okay. Wow, so we went up that. Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay, I think it clears my question. Thank you.
Alright, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, uh, I'm just gonna make a quick comment, then I just asked for a show of hands. Uh, I agree with uh Counselor Sullivan up to a point. Uh, you know, I, I always have a lot of confidence in what he says. It's um, and what other counselors said, y- you know, earlier on tonight, um, you know, worry about the um uh, you know, how do we protect our seniors and, and, and what, what can we do to uh protect our residents? And, you know, Mike's, Mike's right. It's, it's the budget. Um, the, our, our budget, and you know, well, I think all of us over here heard Kevin say it for years and years and years. Um, the, the budget just really um keeps growing, and that's kind of a, that's kind of how we got in the pickle we are, but I, I just said some you know, I, I see other people with their hands up, Mr. President. I, I don't, I wanna respect that, but I, I would just like to get a show of hands at some point on the motion reconsider, so we can sort of figure out where we are if we have to take this vote again. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we are, we're gonna do that. So Counselor McGivern and Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as I said earlier, and it keeps coming up about averages and, and tax bills, they are important. As I said earlier, no matter what we do, you'll, there's a way to look at this as property taxes ugly, it's gonna, it hurts people, no matter how you do it, but people understand services need to be paid for. Now, I, I, I love the way Counselor Sullivan said, you know, and, and not just, it's not just the mall, but the way he said, the average tax bill went down on the commercial side, a big part of it is because of what happened to the mall. And if you take the mall out, there's a whole different type of average, but it's still an average. So let's, let's just look at some businesses and think about what you're doing. What are you doing to that average bodega, the average convenience store? What are you doing to the, the mom and pop stores? What are you doing to restaurants like Mrs. Mitchell's? Like, you know, these small restaurants that, you know, are, are trying to survive. What are we doing to our buyers who aren't, aren't even open? You know, what are we doing to establishments that are, that are getting hammered by COVID? What are we doing to the uh, the shops down on High Street? We're asking them to increase their bills un- unduly compared to what we're asking residential property owners to, to increase and increase their bills. And that's why I think we gotta reconsider this and try to come to a better compromise as far as the both rates go, because well, all we're doing is that we, we set the tax rate about a half hour, hour ago, when we balanced the budget. It's a hundred percent tax rate that got set automatically. We're just shifting the tax rate, and I'm just asking that we do it a little bit more fair on commercial property versus residential.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, and once again, let me take my hand down first, I don't think about this. Forty dollars per thousand for any new business you wanna bring to town. Come, come to Hoyok, come to Hoyok. We need jobs, we, we, we need you here, we, we need more opportunities for our sis, for our kids coming out of high school, coming, we, we need jobs here. Oh, by the way, we have the highest tax rate in the state. Come on over, come on, we, we want you, we love you. It ain't gonna work. It ain't gonna work.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
So, I'll be willing to entertain the reconsideration, um, and for us to vote again. But I also want to mention that if we start picking another three, let's not over-exaggerate, because what it seemed was once residential will go super high, and then commercial will go super low, and then vice versa. We need to stop doing that. Let's, let's find something that's gonna balance the whole budget for both. It's gonna be, be uh, you know, make sense for residential and make sense for commercial. Don't go too high, don't go too low, like just find a balance.
Alright, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sound.
No, it's fine. Look at, hey, it's, it, and to the reconsideration, Counselor Tallman's correct, we never done that before. We set the rate and we move on. Uh, I'll just say one thing to that. We're not in normal times anymore, you know. This virus has done a damage not only on homeowners in residential, but on businesses. And we know with the winter, you know, we just almost got two feet of snow, some people are just shutting down shop. The, the, I mean, we have to consider both sides. What is fair and what is equitable? I mean, we gotta do our best here, and not the point anyone saying, well, you did this to this side, to that side. We're trying to make what's fair to everyone because of the situation that we're all in. There is no good answer to that. Uh, I think if we find some type of compromise, that's, that's the best we can do to, to help both sides, because both sides are equally hurting. So Counselor Tallman?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm willing also to uh go back to reconsider. I, I know what I said earlier, but uh, it does seem like a high rate. I, I sort of wish we went uh with one of the earlier rates that we did put out there. It seems much fairer, but um, you know, I do think of the uh, the, the senior citizens and the people that are now working, um, and I do realize that we have businesses that we have to support. It's, it's a tough balance. As Counselor McGivern said, it's not, it's not easy. It's an ugly thing to do this way, this way. But um, I, I think we can go back to maybe one of our early your motions and try to make a compromise where we, we get the seven votes and, 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 and go forward to make it somewhat reasonable to the um, to the businesses and the residents. Thank you.
So, Counselor Lisi, you have something or?
Yeah, um, just because, you know, if we re- if we reconsider, the um final vote of the second three still has not been uh taken up. So I just was wondering, procedurally, do we go to that one first?
You do. You have to. You have to go to that to then finish that one. If, well, be clear, you have to vote on that one. However, it turns out, if it doesn't pass, you'd go to another three. So you have to finish off, well, I'll call the round to then start a new three.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay. See no further questions. The motion is to reconsider our actions. Please raise your hands by the screen and I'll count it. Um, if you're voting to reconsider, voting to reconsider, I just need a show of hands. So. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Me too.
I have a, a nine. So it, it passes. So motion is to reconsider. That allows us to go back to which would be option one. Which would be the 1.6430. And if, if you give me one second, if Jeffrey can pull that back up to show people.
1.6.
1.6430. We'll scroll down or scroll up actually to that. That's at once, that's the market 165 now highlighted. That would give you a resident of 1928 and a commercial of 4065. I'll call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting. Uh, sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask, is that the one that, uh, I, I believe, uh, Lisi had proposed?
Right.
Yeah, Lisi, is that the one you proposed before? Yeah, okay. Cause I gotta, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So here we go. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Graney.
Yeah.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
Tallman.
Yes.
Bacon.
No.
Nine in the favor, four against. That one would pass.
Yeah.
See any, no hands, no comments?
Oh, just.
All right.
Do we have to sign something, Todd?
We're, I, I'll have to get it to, good question, Counselor Bartley. We usually send around that form. He assigned it. I'll have to, um,
um, no, in, Tony, oh, the computer, right? Counselor.
Yeah.
Counselor McGee, those, um, all those sign, all those forms are, um, gone with the streamlining of, uh,
Yeah.
D, DOR government and with the COVID this year, the clerk has to just sign off on your vote and she's, she'll submit a, a letter to the DOR. That's a form letter. That's it, that says who, you know, on this date that it, it was attested. So you're all set for, for not signing anything this year.
Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn then, right?
If that is, that is it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Everyone have a good night.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
I can get back to my.
Merry Christmas.
All right, everybody. Merry Christmas to everyone.